That the meeting convenes right now. And then you guys can start your spiel and we just won't be able to live broadcast on YouTube today. I can't, I can't seem to make that work.
Yeah, it can't be helped and you did your best. So there we go. All right, um, I'll call the meeting to order at twelve oh seven PM. And I'll read the boilerplate as fast as I can. This is a, a meeting of the Southborough Library Board of Trustees, January twenty six, twenty twenty one. Uh, via remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law GL. See thirty, section eighteen and the governor's March fifteen, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Library Board of Trustees will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties. With the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner, southboroughtown.com slash remote meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will put on. Southborough's website and audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Uh, Ryan, I think this covers what just happened. That we're in the despite best efforts category. Okay. Uh, first, um, order of business, I will do the attendance. Trustee Davis here, trustee Eckberg. Landry here, trustee Maney. Trustee Reagan. Trustee Asdani. Okay, full, full, full quorum. All right. Uh, we're to re, to review and approve the minutes of December fifteen, December sixteen and January five, twenty twenty one. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I, just to start before you guys begin your discussion, I apologize that they were distributed only yesterday. So if people didn't get a chance to read them and want to. You know, talk about this in the next meeting. Uh, I, I think that's okay for you to entertain, Margery. If you guys did get a chance to read them, I know there were. Some of them were joint meetings where those other boards are gonna post their own minutes. But I checked with Jim Hegarty, we're supposed to post our own minutes as well. So I had Val work on those, so.
All right, thank you. Any, any additions, corrections? No? Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we, um, approve the minutes of the meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. The meeting on December sixteen, twenty twenty, and the meeting on January fifth, twenty twenty one. Do I have a second? All right, um, trustee Davis. Uh, trustee Eckberg. Trustee Landry, I, trustee Maney. Trustee Reagan. Trustee Asdani. Amy, you're muted. Trustee Asdani. Okay, passes. All right. Um, the next order of business is reports and discussions, but I think since Mary is here, if nobody objects, I'll. Suggest that we move the library facade restoration project up to, um, first discussion. Everybody okay with that? Okay, uh, Mary, you're on.
Progress is moving along the front stairs of made significant process, progress in the last two weeks. The roof has, uh, the membrane is complete now and we're doing some capping and resetting the coping stones. So we're turning the corner to getting out of there. The change order that Ryan sent out, eh, and I can go over those, so we'll just do this. Uh, so the original deck, one deck was different than the other, the existing. The existing deck was on, had a concrete base to it, so they had to change the fasteners to connect to that. So there was a s- small charge for that. There was, uh, the basement window restoration, one of them in the front. Uh, there's a meeting room down there, not the teenside, the other side, that window was rotted and needs to be repaired. Uh, so there's, uh, we have. The wood header is at the front door. That's already been installed and primed. It needs another coat of paint. The grate at the front steps, so the repair is for the cage enclosure that goes. On the side of the step, so what's called the cheek wall. The, the door will be reused, but the frame that attaches to the granite is being custom made. Um, so that, that needs to be done because right now it's. It's not in a safe condition, even though John has put a lock on it to prevent anybody from climbing in there. If somebody fell off those steps, they could be impaled because it hangs out. So that's gonna be repaired. The bluestone chimney caps. So where you have had water in the past where the two buildings connect. One of them is because there's a chimney there that's not capped and it's not being used anymore. So that, um. By capping that, that will reduce, that will eliminate any of that water that sneaks in there. It basically, you know, gets into the chimney and then it leaches through the brick down into the building. So there's one other change order that's not on here that I think some of you are aware of. The existing historic windows, um, are still beautiful, but they need to be recocked. The closer we got to them, the more that we saw the need for it, and especially if we're gonna be installing storm windows, you wanna do it now. Rather than have to take them off in a couple of years and cock it and then put the windows back on. So I'm not ready, I know I discussed with Janet, but I'm not ready to give you a price yet because what was determined at last week's meeting, they came in with a price. To do all this work. But then at the meeting, they discovered that the windows can, the caulking contains asbestos.
The present caulking, you mean, the current caulking?
Yep, and it needs to be abated by a licensed professional. So they, um, got a call, got an estimate from a abatement company, which. We asked them to get another company, we felt it was too high. So they're getting another quote. And, you know, and just to see what, make sure they're in the right ballpark. Cause we thought it was pretty high, but there are a number of windows that need to be done. The whole historic building. Has asbestos in the caulking, which was typical of the time. It, um, won't affect anybody. They will plastic off inside to make sure nothing comes through. It'll all be properly disposed of and in order to have. Um, a hygienist, Massachusetts requires a hygienist onsite. So the hygienist, uh, will be onsite monitoring the work, making sure it's properly disposed of, signing off on all the, um, laden slips. That's about four hundred dollars a day. So that'll be an additional cost. We figure this. They're saying it's gonna be six days. That seems a bit ex, we're hoping to get that down, um, for the abatement.
How much was the first bid that came in, Mary?
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Oh, oh, that's very high.
One six or six oh?
But it's, and, um, and there's some other stuff in there that we had a conference call this morning with the contractor to say, hey. You know, we, we don't agree with this number, let's get a second number in here, let's, you know, and let's look at what they're really saying. For durations and required equipment. So we'll discuss that more Thursday. So we haven't released them for that work because of these costs.
So there's two sets of expenses for the windows. One is to remove the old, uh, caulking and the other is to put on new ca, new caulking.
Right, and the removal has to be done by a licensed asbestos certified person.
Um, Janet, do you wanna, uh, elaborate on any of that since you're, um, facade expert at this point?
Uh, no, I mean, Mary's pretty thorough. Um, we do still have plenty of money for that without even going into the, um. Contingency specified by CPC in the town meeting. So this, we'll, even after the, well, not after the sixteen thousand if we end up with that, but we'll still have. About a hundred thousand extra minus whatever, uh, yeah, it's, it's, we've got plenty at this point. So we might still have to, if we have to put money towards a, um. The, why am I forgetting the name of this? The CPC required, uh, documentation. If we end up having to put money to that.
Preservation restriction.
Preservation restriction, thank you. I have to finish this coffee.
We've all blocked it, I know.
Still have, you know, we still have money available if we end up having to go that route. Um, again, it's with this, this project is way under the initial estimates.
Yeah, we've been fortunate. It's a good contractor.
Good, so, um, do you need anything else from us, Mary, today?
No, I wish I could give you more information, but this all came about early this morning and we got right on the phone with the contractor. We should have better numbers on Thursday. We're hoping to get the second person out there this afternoon to give us the price.
Okay, that's.
Um, just, just to clarify though, I think we said there was gonna be one remaining change order. But they're, they're interrelated, they're actually gonna be two separate items because it isn't just the caulking replacement. Um, and asbestos removal, which I think is the, gonna be the same thing. I don't know if we're doing asbestos removal as a separate item. We'll probably find out Thursday. But there's a separate item to replace several damaged window panes throughout the historic area. Because they're actually these, um, they're like these six pane windows in some of the historic windows. And I, I mean, part of the, I think the, the in-depth look at the window, I keep sort of, uh, falling on the spear for this one. I, I noticed some damage on, on some of the windows that, I mean, I'm just paying more attention, I think, to the building. Than I even was before because all the work is happening. So that was when I started noticing just some fine cracks in some of the windows. And that was, I actually was the one who talked to the contractor. And then I kind of, I think, initiated this sort of second look at the windows. But I think because like Janet said, and, and Mary, the, the, uh, money, the bids were so favorable. That we're really looking at, we're taking a more in-depth look at the windows than we were before. And we're finding that a little bit more work can be done on those. And I think, like she said, since the storm windows are delayed. This thing has kind of lined up very well. So I think it's, we definitely should do this if. We can, which it looks like we can, so.
And Ryan, the cracks are cracks in the glass or cracks in the wood frames?
Cracks in the glass. So then you're talking, there's about twenty panes of glass that need to be replaced. That they identified on a close inspection. Many of them are right where the wood meets the glass. Which is after a hundred years of the panes being in there is, um. It's amazing that there weren't more glass panes, I think, that were damaged. And some of them are, you really have to get up close to see that they're damaged, but, um, they are.
Well, now's the time to do it. Okay, do we have any other questions on this?
Uh, Mary, a quick question. Uh, when you say getting this, uh, this, uh, uh, job requoted. Is that essentially going back to the contractor and asking him to find a sub that which will, which will do it less expensively? Is that how it works?
That's what he's trying to, he's getting another number from another abatement sub. To see if it lines up or if we can get a better price. And the other, and the sub that he's going out to, I have, um, used multiple times. So we're hoping to get a better price.
Good. Okay, that's great. All right, any other questions about the, our facade? No? Uh, okay, Mary, thank you for all your good work on this. We appreciate it. And Janet too, shout out to Janet as well. Okay, we'll see you later. All right, so shall we move on to the, uh. Director's report. Ryan, you're on, how's that?
I apologize in advance for the concern. They're definitely using a saw.
Well, we'll have an idea of what you live with every day.
Yeah, he timed this just so he could get some sympathy going.
So we're very delayed, but we're about to go live on YouTube.
Oh, good, okay. Excellent.
That's how long it took, so I'm glad we didn't wait.
Wow, I'm impressed that you can do it, really.
So please, I had to close everything, so I'm just bringing up my director's report.
All right, and now we have the police department weighing in, right? Or is it fire?
Yeah, but that was the, uh, police officer. Sorry, give me, give me a moment. This is, this is not my meeting, guys.
Hey, while we're waiting, can I ask you a question, Janet? Your, your, your weekly meetings with the contractor, uh, what, what's the vibe between the contractor and, uh, and you? Uh, w- we still have a really good, uh, solid working relationship?
Yes, they're, they're really terrific. Um, I think the. Even between architects and builders, who I think that's, you know, usually a tense relationship or can be. They have worked together before, I think, um, it's really a very cooperative group.
Yeah, they, they have a, um, the contractor and the architect and the OPM have all worked together on prior projects. They all. I think many of them were working on a church in Somerville, which they've mentioned on a couple of occasions, cause they also had to do storm windows there. So, you know, they were kind of, they've used the same storm window company for that. So, um. Janet and I are, are kinda, I think, the, more of the new kids on the block, right? We're, we're the ones who are working with them for the first time. And even John, I think, has had some prior dealings with the architect and with the OPM. Uh, we, I mean, I've known them for years at this point because of our work and the assessment. So it's really the contractor is the new person and I, I would agree with Janet. I think it's, I'm impressed. I think he's really great, so.
That's great, okay. So, okay. And are we doing the director's report?
So, going to the budget item, I know it usually breezes past that one, but I have a request in this meeting. So, um, in order to enhance our marketing, which is something that I've been looking at doing more in the past couple of weeks. Since we're gonna be, I think, continuing to do curbside and have primarily virtual programs in the next several months. Was, one, one of the big things is Pat and I have talked in the last month, we've noticed that new books are not. Circulating in the way that they were initially. And part of that is we don't think people are finding out about new books in the same way. And we have gotten some feedback that people would really, the one thing they miss about coming in, other than the wonderful staff. Is browsing. So, um, I was tr, I've talked with a number of library directors about how to enhance that. And what are they doing at their locations? I found out that, um, CW Mars sort of, um. Works with this company called Wowberry, which is a specific marketing. Um, library vehicle that, uh, connects with the Evergreen platform. And it creates a book digest of new items that have been added to the library. And then it sends it out as a weekly newsletter. So, um. I wa, I did go ahead and purchase it because we wanted to try to get that live. We found out their billing cycle starts January twentieth. So I was hoping that I, I was hoping we would meet last week so that I could kind of tell you guys before this went live. But many of you probably already got, if, if you're subscribed to the newsletter, which I know all of you are. Um, you already got your first Wowberry edition. And then the sec, we, we combined that, we did new items and we did a number of the staff picks. So what we're gonna do for the next one is we're gonna do pretty much entirely new items and, uh, go from there. But we had, um, a hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents left in dues. Even with the consortium discount, Wowberry costs, um, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, we ta, I wanna take it out of dues because that's what it will come out of next year, but we'd have to go into a negative balance. What I can let you guys know is that there's a number of the smaller line items this year that are going to remain in a positive balance. Because we're not gonna use them. So one of them is the in-state travel money, which we have four hundred and fifty dollars of. So that more than covers this. And, so I'm, I'm hoping if we continue maintaining not using the. The in-state travel, which we're not anticipating to until probably the next fiscal year. If, if we can, um, is, is, I, I, I can do this, I think, without your permission. But I would like, I wanna let you guys know because we haven't, we've been very good about zeroing out balances, not going into negative balances. And this would be, this would be reflected on the spreadsheet. So I just wanna make sure that you guys are A, aware of it. B, I can address any questions, and then C, you know that the money is there, if that makes sense.
Well, it's fine with me. Does anybody have any, um, objections?
No, I just wanted to speak in support of it. I think that, um, it'll save time for the staff. Um, because they won't need to be creating content for every, you know, new book that we want to promote. So I think this is a smart way to automate. Um, or use a tool that helps us automate, um, the promotions, since we don't have dedicated marketing staff. So I think it's a great idea.
Amy and I have tried to do a similar thing in the current Constant Contact newsletter. And what we found very early, and I'm sure many of you have seen this. Is that the newsletter does not lend itself towards sort of a book digest format. We've had to kind of be creative. And then the, the book, I'm sure the, the cover of the book sometimes, if you're browsing on a mobile device, is bigger than the screen. So that was, it's been a challenge trying to integrate that. So this is much better. I have spoken a lot with the owner of the company on how to make it work for Southborough. And I'm, I've been very happy with the result so far.
Well, that's great. It sounds like one more example of, uh, using electronic delivery to, uh. Supplement what the library is doing, which is great. Any, any other, um, board members wanna weigh in on that? Sounds good, okay. All right, moving on along.
Taking it out of dues is okay with everybody? Okay, all right, so that's what I'll do.
Thank you, yeah, it's great. Okay, how about, um, facilities? I saw that was in your report.
I'm just, if it's okay, I know I usually don't do this with the director's report, but I'm gonna go step by step today, cause I think we should. So, um, the EMS installation is still not done. Um, they are here onsite today. They're working very hard to try to finish up. Um, I do believe they got the part that they were waiting on. There were, there are, you'll notice if you're. I know a few of you have been in the building, but because the EMS system, um, is. Uh, enabled now, there are a number of thermostats which can locally control some of the temperature around the building. So a- as you know, sometimes people downstairs are very cold and sometimes people upstairs are very hot. I can see smiles from people who've talked to the staff about this or who are familiar with the Arctic chill in the summer that's in the children's room. So, uh, this is great because we've already seen a marked improvement on it. But they did have to put, um, sort of like wire casings in a couple places. And I gave them some feedback just that, um, some of the wire casings on the wall were hitting some of the places we put carts. So they've, they've actually already moved everything to a better place, which is really great. I don't think the thermostats are gonna interfere, um, operational wise with anybody. I, I don't think also, my hope is that patrons won't touch them because that'll modify the temperature. And they, there was no choice. We had to put them kind of in public areas. So we might be just doing signage, saying like, if you wanna modify. Um, please don't touch without, uh, please ask library staff if you have any questions about this item or something. I don't know, we need to figure out the right language, cause I don't wanna like promote that you can change the temperature, if that makes sense, right?
Is there a way to put like a, a box over it or a cage or s- something like that?
That's a good, uh, question, Kim. Let me talk to John and see if John has something like that, uh, that we can do. Or if we can put some sort of password on the system that would need to be entered if the, if the change was done, so.
Right, how many, how many boxes like this are there?
I don't have a full count. I would say like six or seven.
Oh wow, that's a lot, yeah, okay.
At least that I've seen. I don't, I, but it's like the children's room has its own temperature control now. So this has been a long time coming, as many of you who have been with us for a long time know.
Yes. For the, for people who are watching, the EMS system is the electronic, uh, thermostat system. That went in when we got a new boiler that's still being put in, as we're hearing, okay.
Yeah, so Mr. Lit noticed, noted that there are items like that, so I will, I will talk to John and see if we. Um, can maybe get something, uh, to protect them before we open to the public.
Sounds good, okay. And the copy machine, our favorite topic.
Uh, so we're still in the same, the same sort of holding pattern that we've been in. Our rep has been very responsive and we're very happy with Canon. Um, we did pay the bill for it, but we found out that the bill had tax on it. So that has to be, we don't pay tax because we're tax exempt. So that part, we've already coordinated that and that part has already been resolved. Um, so I think you guys had gotten a figure at one point, but it's actually six hundred and sixteen dollars less. Which is, this is one of the only times I'm gonna tell us that we didn't spend as much money. So yay. Um, I can give you the exact figures of the copy machine, but that money will remain in state aid. So that's good news. Um, they, a technician should come out soon. They've been, uh, Canon has been talking to JamX. They, Canon, actually the, the rep bought a, uh, wifi extender device. Which, uh, allows the JamX to not have to be public, uh, plugged in to a wired connection. Cause we, we wanted to get the copy machine entirely on the internal wireless network. So it looks like that that has happened now. We just need to finish the install for the JamX to connect it to the Canon. After that, we're good to go. We finally have a copy machine again. We'll probably solve this a year after we started the process. So, um, I'm not in a big rush to ever get another copy machine, I'll say that.
So can, can you and, can staff use it without the JamX installed?
I believe right now they can because I, 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 we are still, um, working around. We're still doing the printer workarounds, cause we don't really wanna touch the copy machine until the install was finished. Um, but I, we have come up with an override for staff to be able to use the copy machine once everything is up and running. I think technically we can use it now, but I wanna wait until the install's finished.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, any questions? Okay, Ryan, how about, um, Envisionware?
Yeah, so Envisionware wasn't working, which I don't think any, I don't know if any of you knew that, but this was a project we were working with Tom Will Flam on before he left. We were trying to, we have a, so if you guys are fami, if you're unfamiliar with Envisionware. It is the security software we use on the public PCs, which is, um, an add-on we get from CW Mars. It requires the patrons who come to the library, use their library card and PIN to log into the machines. So, um, there's a server which it, the entire history, it's been at the Southborough Library. Has been on a physical machine that is in the staff room or on the, what I call the side circ. Sort of where a Pat often sits at the circulation desk. And we had a switch which would go between the computer Pat used and the server machine, which was separate. Tom wanted to get the server completely on a virtual machine so that Windows updates didn't knock out the Envisionware server. So I think Tom, before he left, did complete all of the things he needed to do. What the next step was, was that I think Tom working with CW Mars to coordinate that. So because Tom left, um, I, uh, worked with the CW Mars rep. It looks like we got Envisionware back up. What I need to engage with the new IT manager on is if we ever have a problem with the virtual server. There should be a way for the library to remote in so that we can determine what those issues are or to, to better coordinate IT. If the IT manager would like to assume that responsibility completely, that's fine. We just. If we ever have an issue with the machine, we're gonna have to have ITP pretty responsive. Or we can't have the desktop internet PCs for the public. So they're used roughly about twenty-five times a week during a normal week when we were open to the public. So they're not, obviously our wifi is used much, much more. So, um. But twenty-five is not nothing. There are people, I know even people on boards and committees who come here on a regular basis. And who, uh, use that in tandem with the printers. And it's, it's often the printing service. People log in so that they can get on something and then print it out. So that's, I, I think the, the, um, primary feature that's used there. It looks like, um, the printer is a separate software, but it's part of the package. That's for the record called LPT one. Um, that is also, it looks like needed to be reset for the virtual server and that's all resolved. So it took me the better part of the day, I'll say that, cause the, I had to move a phone. So it took me the better part of the day, I'll say that, because I had to move a phone directly next to the computer. We had to like take Invision Ware down. I want to confirm with Chris McGinn on the town's IT side that the Deep Freeze software that we purchase independently is, is reinstalled before we reopen to the public. What Deep Freeze does is it wipes all of anything that would have been downloaded and any saved passwords from the computer at the end of the day so that the next person who logs in, they, they're not logging into somebody's email or, you know, using a password accidentally.
So this has to get done before the library has patrons coming in to use the public computers, basically, right?
Yes, which again.
Urgent, urgent. Okay.
It's not going to be for a while, but this was one of the things, when Kim and I were looking last fall at a potential by appointment only model, you know, one of the things that came up was, what if people need to use the computer? And we, we got a, I maybe like, I would say two people who asked about it. And at that point, we referred them to the Westborough Library. And I spoke with Maureen Amiot over there, who said it was okay to refer Southborough people because our Invision Ware wasn't working. So it's good that it's back up so that if we needed that as an option or wanted to offer that. We're not doing a by appointment right now, but if we ever move in that, that direction, we have the PCs ready to go.
Well, it sounds under control. So how about the service updates?
Curbside is continuing. I, many of you encouraged us to try to keep doing it outside, even though it would be cold. And even though we, we do bundle up sometimes when we put the bags out and we put our mittens on, but it's been successful. People are continuing to pick up. So I, I, you guys were right. It, it continued and people are still utilizing the service. Moving on to the chat, when we, we did the initial advertising push, I would say we're not getting as many chats as we did the first week. I think people did like the novelty, but we're getting at least one or two a day, sometimes more, depending on if there are questions. What I'll tell you that we're working on, which hopefully I can report on next month, is, and Leah Selick deserves a lot of credit for this. She has been working with John at CW Mars on trying to integrate a online booking for curbside. So instead of having to do the phone calls and then, so you, right, you, you put stuff on hold and then there's a very much a telephone exchange, right? Where we have to call you, we have to get ahold of you, we have to schedule the curbside pickup. So that's been successful so far. But what we'd like to give paid, and it'll continue, I should say that first and foremost. We're going to still take phone calls. You're still going to be able to schedule a curbside over the phone. But what we will be offering, and hopefully in the next month as an option, is to be able to reserve a slot online. And then you would select a pickup time online, will get a notification about it and then we can put the bag out. So you can make everything entirely online. You can book your books online, you can get notified about your books online, and you can book your curbside pickup online.
Yep, sounds good. That would be great.
There are currently only of the, I think it's 163 libraries in CW Mars. It changes, so don't quote me. But only three of the libraries are using the Evergreen curbside function. So we have talked a lot with the libraries that are willing. And actually, all three of them have been, they have a lot to say about the pros and cons of this. So we are trying to figure out the best way to integrate it for Southborough. And then I'm happy to say it looks like we're going to be one of the early adopters of this service. So as you can imagine, Leah, Amy and I have had many, many conversations about how to roll this out to the public and about how to start encouraging people to use it as a service. We will only have a limited number of blocks that are available for people to book online. So when all those blocks are filled up, if you still want your books at a particular time, the only other solution is going to be to call us. So it might still be that we get a fair amount of phone calls, but I, I definitely think moving towards an online pickup system, that's something we wanted to do when we started this. So I think it, it's definitely going to be positive. And I know a number of patrons who will take advantage of it right away.
Question for you, Ryan. Are the, are the number of phone calls to, to reserve books, is it taking up more staff time than you've got? Is it, is it overwhelming the staff or is, are we sort of like managing to keep it?
I, I, there was a balance pre-COVID of, I think, the staff being able to interact with people in person and having to answer phone calls. I would say all of our services, almost entirely. I mean, I help people online and receive a limited number of requests online and Kim does as well. But all the other full-time staff and, and part-time staff who assist us with the phones are that they're only on the phone. And I, we try to balance it out so that people can take turns on the phone because it can be, I don't want to say our staff are overwhelmed because our staff is amazing, but I would say people are very excited about the idea of being able to provide curbside, not entirely on the phone, if that makes sense.
Okay, now that answers my question.
It takes up a significant amount of time, if, if that's, I can say that.
Okay, that's good. Well, business is good. But they're tired. Okay, how about the Rotary Club?
Yeah, so the Rotary Club of Southborough deserves a lot of applause. So we had previously gotten 500 masks from them, which we were going to initially provide once we reopened. So we still have those masks. They got several thousand more. And then they reached out to me to see if the library would be interested. So we are, because we haven't had anybody else ask us if we would like hundreds more masks. So we now, we got 800 additional masks. We now have 1,300, which is great. What I have decided to do is since we are still, sorry if the construction noise is really loud. What, what we have decided to do is to create, we're gonna do like a little folded paper. We're gonna put the mask inside the paper and then distribute them in curbside pickup bags. So we'll have the library logo, we'll have the Southborough Library logo on the, I'm sorry, the library logo, the Rotary logo and just a little note. And it's gonna just be a reminder that when people are coming for their curbside pickup, to please wear a mask, because that is something that patrons are, they've tried to politely remind patrons and we have a number of people who sometimes forget. So we will be able to actively provide masks to people who are doing the pickups. And we're not going to single people out. Everyone's gonna get a mask. So if you guys do a pickup, we're hoping to start that in February and then to continue with that until we run out. So hopefully we'll be able to go through, I would say in probably a couple, maybe like a month or two, we, we, if more masks are available, we could continue doing that as part of the effort, but.
Big thank you to the Rotary. That's really good of them.
If you have any thank you notes, you'd like to write, they have a, they have a P.O. box.
Seriously, I'll write, I'll write a letter. What's the, what's the P.O. box?
I'll, I'll send it to you. I'll send it out to everybody. And I, I should mention, I am a Southborough Rotarian, but I, I had no, I was not involved in the decision to, to, to take the masks. It was, I did ask last time, I knew the masks were available because I know they were looking for somewhere to distribute. But this is nice because I've had the 500 masks just sitting there and I felt bad every time I walked by them because we haven't been giving them out. And now I like that we have a solid plan to do that, so.
Good. I, I have a question, Ryan. Do you want to hang on to some of those for when the library opens?
I thought about that, Jane. We have also gotten some masks that are donated to the town. And so I have worked with the Assistant Town Administrator Vanessa Hale and she has been able to provide some masks, at least for staff use. We've also had a number of patrons who have offered to donate masks to the library, which the staff have also used. So I, I did, that was why I kept the, thank you for asking that question. That was actually why I kept the 500 masks, was to think about saving them until the library opened. What I'll probably do with what we have is distribute about 1,000 of the masks and then see where we're at. So then we'd still have some left. We could continue distributing them in curbside or we could hold them in reserve if we're ready to open to the public. I think realistically, because we have a finite number of the masks, we're gonna need to have a regular supply if we reopen. So part of what I need to think about is how we would accommodate that.
Yeah, I think you need to have some right there in case people come in without them.
And I think we'd work with WB Mason and also with facilities. Who's, I should mention too, because it's coming up, that the Facilities Department is continuing to provide us with PPE supplies for the internal staff use. So, you know, I, I'm sure John's, I would twitch a little bit if I said we have to figure out ways to provide it to the general public too. But that is the next step. So I, I think that, that is definitely in the back of my mind, Jane, and that's a good point to raise.
Okay, are we into Love Your Library Month?
So there'll be a lot more information about that soon. We're hoping to also encourage people, if they don't love their library on Facebook and they don't follow us on Twitter, that one of the best ways you can love your library is jumping on social media. You know, if you are not a subscriber of the e-newsletter, then, you know, you can love your library by being a subscriber. So the, the hope is that people will follow us more and they will be able to find out what we're doing, especially as we move towards nicer weather. Kim and I have talked about a number of ways we can do more and more outdoor programming. So there'll be a lot of information on that. There's WOW Brewery, which is new, which people who get our newsletter know about now. So that, that's one of the campaigns. We've talked with the Food Pantry. So for people who are unfamiliar with this, because I know, we actually do have a couple like board members who are, who kind of newer. This was, we do this every, every February. We, it's usually a partnership with the Southborough Food Pantry where people, instead of paying overdue fines, donate items that go to the food pantry. So I know many of you have participated. I know you can hear the drill. So we are, the, the food pantry has specific items they want donated. They don't want to take anything other than those specific items. So we'll be distributing some bookmarks in curbside pickup bags, letting people know what they can donate. We're gonna continue waiving fines, so this is going to be on top of that. So it's, it's, there's no incentive this year to providing food pantry donations. We just are encouraging people to do that because there are things that the food pantry needs. We'll have a drop-off bin outside so that people can do that and we'll have the drop-off bin available during curbside pickup hours. So people can drop that. We'll bring in the bin at the end of the day, put it out when we put out the curbside tables.
Is this only for the month of February or will it go on longer?
It's gonna be for the month of February right now.
Okay.
If the food pantry identifies that they have a need, we would be willing to partner with them in future months.
Sounds good. Any, any questions from the board on it? No? Okay. How about the Creative Writing Club?
That's, a lot of these are regular programming updates. So the Creative Writing Club is gonna run every other month on the opposite. So that's Friday afternoons and that's more targeted towards, I would say, like older kids and teens. So we have like a core group of about, I would say, five kids who are doing it. We have a couple new participants who are jumping on board and Mariana is running that and she's having a great time. We had a couple Southborough local authors who spoke to the kids last time, which was, I think, very inspiring. On the opposite months, we're gonna be doing new sessions of Scratch with Vow on Saturday mornings. The idea was to kind of make it on Saturdays, A, because we've never done that before and B, because we want to kind of clear the school calendar, if that makes sense. We didn't want to do it. We talked a lot about avoiding Monday as a programming block because we know a majority of Southborough students are, they don't, I think they're not on Zoom on Mondays, I think, in some of the schools at least. So Kim is doing a Zoom storytime now, just so she can have some interaction with the kids. But we're still, we're trying to do more quality over quantity, if that makes sense. We're not trying to do too much programming only because we know that people don't want to be sitting in front of the computer all day and a lot of the kids have to do it already for school, so.
What's the storytime attendance look like?
It's pretty encouraging for Zoom. It's, the, the first couple of them have gone, I would say like, we're getting about like five, six kids. That's good. Because I don't think a lot of people knew about it initially. But we also just did an event newsletter to let people know about new stuff that's happening in February. So that's still relatively new. Kim's only done it, I think, maybe twice so far. We also, we're gonna continue the gardening programs. We have those booked now through June. So actually, when later this afternoon, I'm gonna work on the final round of classes for registration with recreation. So I think programming is in good shape. I know it seems like we're doing maybe a lot less than we were before, but the gardening program attendance has been really good. We had 15 people last night.
Wow.
So I think that's successful for an adult program on Monday at dinnertime, so.
A popular program. Okay, so the pen pal program and the seed exchange, I'm seeing.
Yes, so the, I should mention, we're trying to come up with our kickoff, where I think outdoor events is going to be a Saturday where we have a in-person seed exchange event. So that is tentatively, this is the first time anybody's hearing this, is on April 10th. So it'll probably start at 11 and we'll probably run it for like an hour or two. And that'll be an opportunity where people can safely pick up seeds or safely drop more off if they want to.
Now, Ryan, what seeds are you looking for?
Anything. Vegetables, herbs, flowers. Please, no invasive species.
No bittersweet, no bittersweet berries? Okay.
So we'll try to, we'll also see if the Open Space Preservation Commission would like to have some sort of presence there. We don't know what the restrictions are gonna be on outdoor events. We don't know if people are gonna have to preregister at this point. What I would really love is if it's a drop-in service and it will be completely outside. We'll probably have a rain date scheduled because we're gonna have to start doing that for outdoor events, which is not something we had to worry about too much before. So there's still a lot of logistics to iron out, but it's in April, so we have time. So that's the good news.
Sounds good.
The Pen Pal program is gonna run pretty similar to the drop-offs for the, the Love Your Library. And that I think is gonna start in March because we're still trying to work with the senior center. So a lot of this is, it's sort of an extension of the Creative Writing Club. Some of the kids from Creative Writing Club, but we're gonna open it to any kid who wants to participate, can write a letter to a senior and then the senior can respond. And then we basically will serve as a pickup drop-off location.
And with those letters, is it going to be the same people writing to the same people consistently or is it a one-shot deal?
We will like, we, we, it'll be, people can do one-shot if they want. But if people want to continue doing it and we find momentum with the program, then we will do that. The Senior Center previously tried to do this in the fall and they only got two seniors who wanted to participate and they didn't find, they didn't find any youth participants. So we're hoping, people have been, I think, home a lot more and we've gotten some feedback that some of our, our older patrons are feeling a lot more isolated. So, you know, we also have a number of kids who I think would like to practice their writing now. So I, I think that this is lining up in a number of, of ways and we're hoping we can find more seniors who will participate. We're, we're gonna work with the Senior Center, but we'll also advertise independently.
Oh, that sounds good. Not just Senior Center seniors, right. Sounds good. And tell me about the ukuleles.
I'll have more to say next. I, I have reached out to, we are gonna, it looks like be in the ukulele, the circulating ukulele business. So if you wanted to check out a ukulele at the library, this is going to be one of the new features that you can do. We, I, I reached out to Mary Pycars from the Cultural Arts Council just to see what, what their timeframe is. We had applied for a grant through the SCA C to pay for programs. We have applied to the Southborough Education Foundation, now part of the Southborough Community Foundation, for many for the Ukulele. for many for the ukuleles themselves. So we're hoping that this all lines up and then we get the money and then we can offer the programs and we can circulate the ukuleles. If at any point, one of the grant funding entities doesn't want to fund this, I may come back and see if we could pay for, pay for this out of state aid. We, we want, we were gonna do, I should say, for those of you who don't know, we were planning to do in-person ukulele lessons as part of a team programming block. And that, we didn't end up doing it because we closed. So I, I should wait, I should be patient. But I would like to do these ukulele programs, because we're now talking about a year later from when they were supposed to kind of start. So I, I think, I think ukuleles will circulate. I think people will like them, if they're in the program or not. And we'll, we'll see how it goes. I'll keep you guys posted and I'll let you know next month if I have updates on grant awards.
Let's, are we downloading famous ukulele music to go with the ukuleles or?
I mean, we'll, we'll say, I have no musical skill at all. I would say if I learn a song on the ukulele, it was a success.
Has anybody ever seen that, um, there's a British ukulele group, I guess they've been around forever? You can look on YouTube. There is, I mean, they're comedians too, they're hysterical. I think it's a riot that ukuleles are popular. How much does a ukulele cost?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Great, Ryan, I think, because you can do it again in person as well, once you have the ukuleles. And the ones, the kits you picked are really, you know, they'll be really useful. So they're not just the ukulele, it's a kit, so. With two, there's a tuner in it, I think, and some other things. My daughter who plays checked it out, but, um, it, I think it's great. Learning music is awesome for kids, so thank you for doing that.
You, you can find, I would say, affordably priced ukuleles for around $50 a pop, which was sort of how we priced it out. Yeah, that's, that's, I was surprised too, because I didn't know they were that inexpensive. There are higher-end ukuleles you can buy that are like crafted out of wood, that have, I think, better, uh, better sound quality, because these are going to circulate and we would have to charge patrons a replacement cost if they were damaged. I, I wanted to kind of try to price them affordably. So that was, that was a factor, I think, in the type of ukuleles we tried to price out. We want to circulate, you know, maybe, I don't know. We'll, we'll buy five and see how it goes, but if we can buy more, we will.
I think this is a great program. We, we all want one.
I, I, I should say, just like Amy said, I'm already thinking a couple steps ahead. So even though we kind of wanted to make this a team-focused program, the, the programmer Julie, who does this, is very experienced with younger kids as well. And she has also done adult programs, including ones with people who suffer from Alzheimer's, because music has shown to help people with memory a lot. So she does these sort of memory cafe-type programs. So there's a lot of applications for this, I'll say. Even though it's starting out as a youth program, it could be an adult program as well, eventually.
Where are they being stored in the library?
Probably underneath the holds area. We're trying, we're going to find a best place, depending on where we can find a place for them. Maybe in the storage cabinet behind the desk, if we shift some stuff around. We need to see, that's why we're starting with five, to start, just to see what the size is and then where we would need to put them.
Okay, it sounds great. Any other questions from the board about the ukuleles?
Well.
How about the tuition reimbursement that you have down here?
So that's just a notification that I applied. I'll let you guys know if there is an issue. I think the Personnel Board is going to talk about it February 10th. I missed their deadline, so I don't, I don't know if they can consider it. But if they don't, I may, I'll let you know if I come back to the board with a request for reimbursement. I'm hoping that because the Personnel Board are made up of great people, who are very nice, who sometimes smile upon people who miss deadlines after a couple weeks, that maybe they'll consider, reconsider it. I, I, I'm also hoping that town meeting being pushed out a little bit is giving everybody a little bit of breathing room.
And just for, for people who may be watching this, could, could you just briefly explain what these classes are?
Yeah, so these are, this was identified in my last evaluation. This was for these Massachusetts procurement classes. So some of this came up during the construction. You can be certified in knowing how the bid process works in Massachusetts and how to, how to be a purchasing agent for a municipality. So even though I won't probably be doing a lot of active procurement for the town of Southborough, I was involved in the bid contract for our construction project. And I would also make a very strong argument that if the library were to ever renovate in the future, that I would have to be even more involved in that process. So I, I, I actually found out about these from Maureen in Westborough, who's a certified purchasing agent in her town. And she is now in the process of doing a renovation. And she did that in advance of doing the renovation. So this is kind of, I think, a first step in getting more educated about what that process is and being able to advise you better of what we need to do as far as the steps.
Okay, it sounds great. Any questions? No, okay, so that looks like it for the Director's Report. And my question is, it's now 1:00 and if we want Amy here, we have a half an hour. Do you want to change the sequence of the agenda items to talk about anything in particular before we lose Amy?
Me? Was there something you wanted to get to?
No, job descriptions, uh, the electronic resources.
I can go pretty quick, I think, through most of the stuff. So the Electronic Resources Report is really, so you guys have, I know statistics came up a lot, because we talked to advisory, we talked to selectmen, and it was all very theoretical. So I, I will say, Kim Regan is amazing. She spent a lot of time looking at this data with me. We are still looking at the best ways to present this data and in finding ways to make, I think, thoughtful purchasing decisions in the future. So, you know, part of, some of our resources, as, as you know, from looking at the price list, are more expensive than others. So that's definitely a factor. But you can see, you'll be able to see with these, these reports being ongoing, as to how much usage we're getting from them. So even though, I'd like to say, Freego is the most expensive of the resources, it's also one of the most used. That's something we can answer. We're also going to be, Kim has also helped with this, is we're looking for ways to enhance the marketing of the resources. And we're trying to find ways to do that on a more regular basis. Because we, sometimes we post about these things once and then we don't post about them again for a long time. I think letting people know different features within the resource is kind of key into attracting new people using them.
And it looks like October and November are the highest usage months for everything.
We did have a pretty big spike in April and May when we first closed, because I think a lot of people discovered these for the first time. I, I would also say that for many of these resources, we do not have a full year's worth of data, because we just recently adopted some of them. So you can definitely tell when we did a big advertising push for the Help Now tutoring resource, that people used it. And then when we didn't advertise as much, there was a drop off in the numbers. So that is helpful to know. I also think December, it looks like, was a tough month for all of these resources. And in particular, that might have been because people were focused on the holidays. So that makes sense to me. So we know December is not going to be our highest statistical month in any future year. Or we need to ramp up marketing at that month to try to see, you know, now we have Canopy. So maybe there are Christmas movies we could highlight, right? Holiday films. So, um, you know, I think it's helpful to have this data to know. And then Amy Townsley and I are taking a look at it to try to come up with, um, you know, like, this was the most popular resource this month. This, this many songs were downloaded on Freego this month. Come up with what we call takeaways, which you see at the end of the report, so.
Ryan, I think, can you note, this report only goes through December 2020, so there are some additional ones that you mentioned that will show up on the next report?
Yeah. Yeah. And we also, I should note that the report doesn't cover all of the resources. It covers the ones we can pull monthly statistics for. But I have worked with the head of the Cypress resume and the New Wave legal documents, and we can now supply monthly statistics for those as well. So that'll be added to future reports. So the numbers are not super high, but any number, I think, is worth reporting and letting you guys know. Some months are zero, because, you know, not everybody needs to log in and download a legal document. So again, I think knowing that those services are there, so that when people do need to download a legal document, they come to the library and they use that resource.
Well, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Kim, for being kind of a prime mover on this. It's really, uh, it's excellent. And Kim, I had a question for you. Or is there anything that you think we need to know about this, the rest of the board?
In terms of the recording for electronic resources?
Well, the whole thing, since you're, so you're sort of our expert on this.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think my biggest thing is that we make sure that we have enough information so that we can make a decision when it comes time to remove these products. And if we ever are faced with any sort of reduction in our budget, that we have the numbers so that we can make informed decisions on what we may need to cut. Hopefully it won't come to that, but I just don't want us to be scrambling if, you know, we have a budget reduction and, you know, we've brought on all these new electronic resources. And we just want to make sure that we have a smart way to make decisions on, you know, what we should cut so that we're not reducing or removing items that are, you know, getting a lot of usage. You know, I think that one of the bigger things, as Ryan mentioned, we need to do is look at the marketing and promotion of all of these. Amy Townsley and I talked last week to discuss the schedule for promoting this via social media and through the email newsletters. I think that if we are going to pay for the resources, we need to put the work behind it, to make sure that the patrons know about it. And that's, you know, through our digital channels, because the library's not open and there's no, you know, word of mouth between librarians and patrons in the building right now. And that kind of got to another issue that Ryan had brought up earlier in the meeting, that, you know, right now, we don't pay for any marketing for the library. You know, I don't really see that in, in our future. But if we're going to be promoting these resources through the social media channels and the email newsletters, we need to make sure that people are signing up for email newsletters and following us on Facebook and Twitter, which I believe are the two social media channels that Amy mentioned that we support for the library. So, you know, I don't know if any of you guys are on social media, but, you know, I feel like everybody should be following the library page. For all of the posts, we should be liking them and commenting them, on them, you know, as much as we can, where it makes sense. Because the more that people interact with it, the more that the library's posts will be shown to others. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're kind of focusing on all of those aspects to give it the best chance for the patrons to be able to, you know, regularly be finding out about things and to be reminded about things, and that'll all help with usage.
That sounds great. Anybody on the board have any ideas about how to get the news out there? In addition to myself, bro, which has been wonderful. Any other ideas about how to, how to get the word out?
I, I will say, and, and Kim and I have talked about this, and I, I've, I've talked a lot with, with C W Mars staff. We, we have really decided to kind of pivot, because we pay for Constant Contact newsletter and we're now paying for Wow Brewery to make some of our newsletter services more opt-out versus opt-in, because I think we're trying to give information about services to patrons, but we're not reaching a lot of people. And we get, we get that feedback from people. And, and I, I'm trying to be thoughtful about this effort, because I don't want people to feel like they're getting inundated with library information that they don't want. I, I, I want to make sure that they're, they're getting curated content from us and, and that that is, that it's more specific, I would say, and thoughtful, than just throwing out everything there. But I, I, if patrons are concerned about this, they really don't want email communication, we are not going to force it upon anybody, so.
So that's a traditional marketing thing, that you get much better results when you do an opt-out as opposed to expecting people to go to the trouble of opting in, right?
Well, I, I want to make a comment about that. Brian, I think what you mean by opt-out is that we, we do have permission to email to them based on their signing up via C W Mars for a library account, correct?
Yeah.
Like, we never want to give the impression that we are adding people to our list without their consent. So just be careful of the verbiage around that, just in terms of the CAN SPAM laws. So, you know, the, the, the patrons that are being emailed currently, we have permission based on essentially their signup for, for a library card. And, you know, each time they get a newsletter, they will always have the opportunity to opt-out, because that is a legal requirement. So I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves in trouble here with CAN SPAM laws.
And some people, I will say, you know, we've tried to do a big marketing push recently. Some people have chosen to opt-out, which is okay. You know, we've got, yeah, we've gotten feedback that people have moved out of town, that they, that they had library cards and they forgot to take their email off. We also found, I would say, from this effort, that six people had incorrect emails entered in Evergreen. So we're able to fix those. So they haven't been getting notifications, we found out, on their library card information this whole time. There's also a number of people who are using different emails, who have gotten in touch with us. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's put a little bit more work, I would say, maybe on me in particular, because I've had to sort of contact people. But, but just because we talked about how great Personnel Board is, I actually got a personal message from one of the Personnel Board members, who wasn't getting our newsletter previously, who loves it. He, he said, this, I did not, I was not aware of all the things that you guys were doing and I want to know about books. So he was really grateful. But, so, you know, I, I agree with everything Kim said. It, that's, I do not want to, like I said, force, force the library upon people. But I think there's a lot we're doing that people don't know about. But they will always have the option to unsubscribe and, and we are not going to re-subscribe them, if that's the case. Constant Contact tracks all of that and it, it actually prevents us from re-subscribing people who leave of their own volition, so.
Is there, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kim.
Oh, I was just going to say that all of the work that Ryan has mentioned, it, it may seem very onerous, but, I mean, it's normal for people to leave lists and it's better that way, because if they don't plan on interacting, then, you know, that affects the statistics for the email newsletters. So all of this stuff is kind of regular maintenance for an email campaign. And we want to, you know, we want to get the people out who have either wrong email addresses or people who have moved, because all of that impacts future deliverability. So if you end up with a list of a ton of people who've moved out of town, you know, going forward eventually, that will impact whether Constant Contact is able to deliver all of our emails. So this is all like good stuff that has been happening and it's normal for people to leave a list as you try and build it, so.
I, I will say, there's still about 3,000 residents who don't have library cards. So that's in the back of my mind as, as a marketing thing we need to look at, especially during April, which is library card signup month. And also that a, a good chunk of our users still don't have emails on file and are not getting emails. So I think we need to reach out both to people who are existing users, who maybe need to, to get more online, at least know that that's an option. Maybe they'll join us, maybe they won't. But also to try to reach still the people we're not reaching, which is more, we, we're getting most of the people in town, which is the good news. But, but how do we, I want to make sure we're reaching as many people as possible.
What, are we reaching everybody who's on a board and committee in Southborough?
I hope. They would have to have a library card. Maybe we should let everybody know that if they're on a board and committee.
Yeah.
Get a free library card.
Know where a part of their tax dollars going, right? Just a thought.
So, so two things I think we should try to do before Amy leaves, if time allows. The budget, the FY22 budget is probably the first thing. And then Kim's promotion is the second. So I don't know if you want to take that in any particular order.
Let's, uh, let's do the budget.
Okay. So we were, I was asked, I should say, and I want to let you all know that I was asked to look at different budget reduction figures. Following our meeting with the Selectmen, the joint meeting, then the next, if you guys stayed on or you caught the end of that meeting. if you guys stayed on or you caught the end of that meeting, Brian did a budget presentation where he asked for some feedback from the Selectmen on sort of the budget direction for the town for FY22. We are looking, I would say, overall at about an eight or nine percent tax increase. That is not, I think, I think it's fair to say that the Selectmen are not thrilled about that prospect. And I think you, you met advisory, uh, the Advisory Committee. I don't think that they are thrilled uh, with that prospect either. So um, as part of the effort to take a look at what a budget reduction would mean, I did, I did get some feedback from Brian and he asked me to prepare some uh, comments on a cut of, so this is with the budget we submitted. Um, a, a cut of about fourteen thousand sixty-six, which would just, just about, I think there's a point five, six percent increase we get for next year. So that pretty much means level funding for us. And he also wanted us to take a look at a cut for the, for the overall budget for next year at about thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-two. So I, I will send you these numbers because I have the emails from Brian and I have sort of a rough breakdown of the budget impact. When we're looking at the first option, the fourteen thousand, I'm going to call it the fourteen K cut, okay? So with the fourteen K cut, um, we'd have to eliminate at least one of the part-time positions. There was no way I could uh, come up with a budget. So let, let me back up for a minute before I go into the specifics. As part of this effort, what I was trying to do was to maintain as many staff as possible. I was trying to maintain our certification with the state. So we need to spend at least the sixteen percent on materials. And I was trying to obviously maintain our CW Mars membership, which wasn't, is not really up for debate. If we don't have a computer system, we're not going to be able to check out books, right? What that means is with those three things in mind, a lot of other things suffer as a result of this, including some of the things I tried to protect. Okay, so let, now let's go to the fourteen K cut. Fourteen K cut means the elimination of at least one part-time position. It also means the elimination of Freegal and Skillshare, because those are our two most expensive. So when I'm looking at money numbers, I look at what we spend the most money on. And those are, right now are the two E resources that we spend the most on. Then we'd have to completely zero out some line items. So I'm going to go through the list. We will not have a budget for technology or computers anymore. We would have to cut professional development completely. I, I did note to Brian that that also affects our ability to apply for grants because some of the professional memberships I maintain, like the ALA one, are how I apply for grants. And I get reimbursed for my membership. So um, programming. We go from having a little bit of programming money to no programming money. And I just said I can't apply for as many grants. Um, I'm laughing, none of this is funny. Uh, and in-state travel would be completely zeroed out. So that is four line items that go away completely next year. Small ones, but significant. That's the smaller cut, guys. So let's go to the thirty-six point five one. It's way worse. Um, when we're looking at the salaries and the elimination of positions, we go from one to eight. So we no longer have library pages, we no longer have um, any of the technician staff. So we maintain many of the associates, but barely. Um, also, print and electronic subscriptions, we'd have to eliminate Skillshare, we'd have to eliminate Freegal. So same thing as the fourteen K cut. Um, we'd have to eliminate a little bit more out of the book budget, so eighty-one dollars, but we maintain our certification. And then the elimination of the same line items as before. Computers, professional development, programming, and in-state travel. So, all that said, and Janet was nice enough to take a look at these numbers with me and look at some of the narrative impact here, um, which I shared with Brian yesterday. What this really means is that we're not able to provide the services that we have been able to provide up until now. You, anytime we need to do a revised budget or I prepare a revised budget for you from your direction, you need to approve it at a meeting. What we have not been asked to do at this point by the Selectmen is to come up with a, a budget. They just want to know what the impact of these reductions would be for next year so that they can decide, I think, whether or not they would like to give direction to departments on making reductions. I will say, we're doing a three percent increase next year and we're attempting to do a lot more, especially electronically. That, you know, that was really the big push this year, I think, is in trying to offer as many resources that we think people are interested in. And you can see, we have the statistics now, at least as an early talking point, to start having those conversations. I will also say that in the advisory meeting and the Selectmen meeting, people seemed relatively happy with the library and on board with the direction we're going as far as online resources. So I feel like those were, at least from a philosophical standpoint, supported, right? I don't think at this time, as the library director, I'm advising you guys to cut the budget for next year. We're coming in at a three percent. I think that was a very thoughtful number. I think we're gonna have to approve a new budget anyway. The, the Personnel Board is meeting tomorrow. I'm hoping that they will decide what the increase rate is going to be so that I can give you that information next month. But because we're going to be going through the process of revising the budget anyway, we also have to integrate Kim's promotion. So that, that is a factor as well. I don't know if you guys want to provide me any input or direction on, like, are there line items we want to think about eliminating? Are there, do you think three percent is too high after looking at the tax rate? Situation for next year? I think it's worth having an initial discussion for this now. And I, and I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot a little bit, but I think this is something we're going to be talking about probably for the next couple of months, as we need.
My, my question is, was there any discussion of why the tax rate is going up so much? Because it certainly isn't us.
I, I would agree. I don't think the, I don't think the library is what's driving.
No, we're not driving it. So any idea where that's coming from?
No. Most years, this is where everything is at this time. When you're looking at the overall budget, because everybody puts in all their hopes and dreams. They've been cut down to some extent, but you know, there's always new police officers, always new fire. And um, adding bodies is the most expensive thing that you can do on a budget because of all the benefits. You know, there's an additional, when you add a salary, there's an additional forty percent cost in social security, um, benefits and all that stuff. So usually this is where the budget is and it gets cut down from here. So they're looking for any soft spots. I don't think that, you know, I looked over the numbers with Brian. I don't think we have any soft spots.
No.
Anything that gets cut, cuts services. If you cut part timers, you have to cut back hours eventually. Um, and everyone has asked for more services, more hours. So I think, I think we should hold our ground.
I agree. We've, we've finally got the staff up so that it's safe to have, you know, there's coverage. There's, we were always concerned about safety. When the library is open, it'll open again if you have one person on a floor. And we've, we've kind of solved that. And I, I think we're sort of bare bones. And I think Kim's um, promotion, if, if I understand correctly, what that's going to cost is going to be compensated for by somebody, um, by another available amount of salary money.
So, so yes, and that's a good segue. We have, we do have a part-time technician who has given her notice and she's going to be leaving in the next couple of weeks. That is not because she doesn't like working here. I, I think actually she really likes working here, but she's going to be moving out of town. She's currently a Marlboro resident and she's going to be moving at least two hours away. So um, she has decided to resign. We're not going to give her, uh, we're obviously not going to hire a replacement right now because we, we have opportunities to give existing hours to some of the staff. But what that means is the budgeted money for next year, right? We, we, I, I'm not going to hire somebody probably in July, I would say, given the current status of everything. So it does look like there's, the amount of money that she makes in a year is actually somewhat equal to what Kim would be making as far as this promotion. So we're not doing, we're not giving Kim a promotion because somebody's leaving, and that's not why this person's leaving. It just sort of balanced out, which a lot of times, in a lot of years, things kind of line up and that's what happens at the library. What will be my challenge is trying to fill her hours in uh, once we reopen, which I am, I think we can absorb maybe the loss of one person. So that my, the fourteen K cut, that sort of scenario, the, the position itself, that is happening now because we lost a position. What I think is unacceptable is the loss of those other line items and in particular, the new electronic resources. We just got Freegal back. It hasn't even been back a full year since we purchased it again last year when we first shut down. And Skillshare, I don't even think has really gotten a fair shake. I think it went live in like November. So people still are going to be finding that. And then we're going to be advertising these things and then we're going to be taking them away. So tha- that I don't think is, it is a, is a advisable situation.
So what are, board members, what are trustees, what are your thoughts about the budget? David, what do you think?
I line up with those of you who, who think we ought to hang tough.
Okay, Jane?
You're mute. Jane, you're muted.
I was going to say the same thing. Um, uh, what Janet said made a lot of sense. And um, you know, um, we, we've already cut it and worked on it. So that's my opinion.
All right. And Amy, how about you?
I agree too. I think you can't get blood from a stone. We've cut, we don't even have a programming budget. It's, so, you know, Ryan and Kim are everywhere trying to get grants to do things that we should be, should be funded. So.
Agreed. Okay, Kim, how about you?
You know, I feel the same as the rest. I mean, I think maybe if there was one thing that could be cut is the in-state travel because no one's going anywhere anyways, but that's a drop in the bucket compared to the rest of the budget. Um, I did want to ask, so Ryan, to maintain your certification, um, spending that sixteen percent on materials is, does that only include physical materials or, or physical and um, electronic books? Like, is there any way that that can include um, the electronic resources?
I, I will answer your question by saying that the, it, the database costs are included as part of that.
Oh, they are already?
They are. So if it is, if it is a material that patrons use, even if it is electronic, that counts as a material expenditure. Also, I should note, in past years, this has been helpful, not as much this, this one, was the Friends uh, purchase museum passes. That is able to be counted sort of on top of what we spend as part of the materials expenditure because the passes technically circulate, right? A lot of them are laminate passes that go in and out, but even the paper ones, because we track statistics for it and we can talk and it's a, it's something we hand to the people, that counts as a circulating material. It's worth noting that the ukuleles and the puzzles and the telescopes also all count as circulating materials. So as we move more into sort of the library of things, the non-traditional circulating items, those will count as part of these too. And we can technically, an argument can be made for spending budget money on those things if there's money available. What I really like to maintain is, and we've asked patrons about this in strategic planning, is what, what do you like? Do you like eBooks? Do you like databases? What is the thing that brings you to the library? What is your number one thing? And physical books, seventy-one percent of what, that was in the last survey that we got from people. So people like books. I want to try to maintain the book budget as much as possible. But a lot of these things are going electronic. And I think you can see when we shut down how popular Hoopla became. And even though, like, Hoopla has maintained, I think, a level of popularity, in particular with audiobooks, and people like that they can log into it, they can get something right away. You know, the Hoopla and Canopy are both online things, but we're, those are also material expenditures. Those get directly taken out of educational supplies. So that, that's a long answer, Kim, but electronic resources count if there's something that's directly provided to the patron as a material.
Because we split that item, right?
We, we separate out the subscription costs now so that we have a sense of how much they cost. In past years, if we like added a database, we sometimes would take it out of educational supplies because that can be counted as a materials expenditure. What I was trying to do was make the electronic costs more transparent so that people can see, these are subscriptions the library has, this is how much it costs.
But it's all, it's all in the same silo, basically.
Yeah. So you should think about not just the, the educational supplies and materials expenditures, think of the subscription cost as like a subunit, but they're really combined.
Okay, that's good. Um, so I guess if I can summarize the sense of the meeting, the, the Board of Trustees supports the budget as it presently stands and doesn't support modifying it. Is that, is that, everybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right. So there we are. All right. So there, you have your, you have your answer from us, Ryan. There it is. How about, um, if you're okay with this, moving on to the job descriptions?
Sure. Uh, what, what I'll say is, I'm going to try to maintain the budget at three percent when I have to um, resubmit it to you uh, next month after the Personnel Board decision. So if they approve the new increase rate, uh, I will send you a revised budget and I will try to, I will do my best to try to maintain it at a three percent increase. So that way, if you get asked by, by different people in town or they want to know what the library increase is going to be, and that will be inclusive of Kim's promotion. So I'll try to work the numbers so that that is integrated and reflected.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Okay, so how about these two job descriptions?
Amy, you need to go.
Yeah, sorry. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye.
For the teen librarian job description, which I know we've talked many, many months about, is, I thought we were all set to send it to the Personnel Board, but I got some feedback from the Assistant Town Administrator who thinks that we should have some technology items in the description. She, she and I took a look at other library job descriptions and we included um, those to be consistent with other of the single-page job descriptions we included. I thought it was a good note. I thought they were worth including. So that's why I put them in. So I know you approved it, I think, last month, but I'm hoping that you'll re-approve it with the technology additions. But if you want to make any revisions, now is the time.
Is that the second bullet point under job responsibilities?
There were two new ones added. So let me just pull it up.
It looks like bullet two and three.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, it makes sense to add those. I, I, in my mind, those were kind of given, so it, it makes sense to spell it out specifically.
All right. Anybody have any uh, questions or comments about that?
No, I think it's a good idea.
No, it makes sense. I think so.
Good. Okay, so I move that we accept the teen librarian description as amended. Second.
Ryan's saying something.
No, I'm sorry, I'm messing up the vote. I'm just saying, in the requirements section, I believe the data processing and automation systems was added as well because that is a technology-specific item. I don't know that that was in previous descriptions. So that was a new, there were two. There was actually, the third bullet point in the responsibilities was there. It's the second one that's new and then it is the And then it is the third to last one on requirements, if that made any sense. That one is new as well. And that is consistent with other library job descriptions, just as a point of reference.
Okay, that's a good catch then. All right, so I'll, I'll resubmit my motion.
Can I just, shouldn't it be afecting, AFF instead of effecting?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Okay.
All right, so I, I, again, will move that we accept the teen librarian a job description as amended with those two items.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Eckberg?
Aye.
Trustee Landry?
Aye.
Trustee Maney?
Aye.
Trustee Reagan?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes, and we have dealt with that. Ryan, it's back on you.
Great. So as far as the, the description now, that we have an approved version, the Personnel Board was undertaking a lot of items for this upcoming town meeting. And I think, I, I was getting the sense maybe that there was some hesitation at looking at a brand-new job to add in a, as far as the library. And is this a time-sensitive position? Which I, when it really came down to answering that question, I would say, we're not looking to hire anybody in the next year, right? So this item might be able to wait a year. I think a lot of this was, was under the, the clock of submitting everything by, you know, a March town meeting. So I don't know if the timeframe for town meeting has really affected. I think Personnel Board has just enough to do, as they did before. But I need some direction from, from you guys on, should I, do you want me to submit this? Asking for this town meeting to be added to the SAP for FY22? Or is it okay if we add it for the FY23 town meeting?
I, I think if possible, we'd do it sooner rather than later. It's just another bullet in the, in your gun. You know, of things you, you may or may not want to do next year. If you have it approved, it's nice. If it's impossible, it's impossible, but.
Wait, we give it to Personnel and they, they decide whether they put it, we, we give it to Personnel now and say, do it as soon as you can, but they decide whether they actually will do it, right?
They, typically, they like to have any additions to the SAP done by the end of January. So they still need to meet with me to talk to me about this. And we just, it took a while to get the revisions to the description done. So I'm, Janet, I think, I kind of agree with that. I think there's no harm in asking them.
Yeah.
If it could be included this year. I would just say, if they come back and say, I, I know that they've, they've had to talk with the Board of Health a number of times about their position needs, and that is, that has definitely taken a priority, which I think makes sense, given the state of things right now. But if there is an ability to add in the teen description for this upcoming year, I think it's better to have it in the SAP now, if it's possible.
Yeah, I think so too.
I agree with that. Why not try?
Yeah. Anybody have, anybody disagree or want to say anything? Okay, so yeah, move forward, and if they can do it, they can do it. How's that? Good. Okay, I think our, our last item is the, is Kim's promotion.
So, as a point of reference, I also included the Assistant Library, the Assistant Library Director job description. The Assistant Library job description needs a couple of updates. Even though Jane and Amy Vacris did amazing work on it, the, the main updates it's going to need is there's a couple of places where it references the teen room and teen services, which we would revise to update to children, the children's room and to children's services for obvious reasons.
Right.
Also, Janet's note about the visual, the vision, I would also like to revise, so that it's consistent with what we just did with the teen job description. So what I'd like to propose is, you guys make a decision about the promotion, because I think we're ready for that. And then I come back at the next meeting with a revised job description for you to approve.
That was good to me. Anybody else?
That's good.
Kim Ivors and I have reviewed the description, and her note was really, can we update the teen, the teen, the young adult areas to reflect children's? Which I said, I'd be happy to take to you guys, and I'd be happy to work on that, and then give you a version next month. So Janet, I'll probably reach out to you. And, and Jane, I might ask you too, because you did such great work on this initially. And I, I apologize for having to change it.
Well, it makes sense to change it, because it's a different situation, so, yeah.
I'm just wondering, is there a way to say it generically, so it wouldn't have to change every couple of years for that?
So we have, we have talked about children's room or a teen room, and including both, or, and we've talked about calling it youth services versus.
Or specialty room, you know, that kind of thing. So it could be either or or both.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
We'll have plenty of time to talk about the language, Janet. I, I signed you up without even asking you.
That's okay. We've moved way beyond normal vision written in here, so. But that was, I guess.
The Board will get a chance to review it, too, as a group. And then if anybody has any concerns about the language, we'll address that. Make sure that everybody's at least 95% happy.
Absolutely. So what you need from us now is to approve the, to approve this memo to Betsy for the hourly rate increase.
So the memo is, is to explain what's going on. What the motion would need to be is to promote Kimberly Ivors from children's librarian to assistant library director. What I need to remind you, and what I've done a bad job of in the past, is that you can, we, in the memo recommends what the pay increase would be, but the Personnel Board is the one that needs to approve a pay increase. So you need to understand that you have the ability to promote Kim. So at the end of this meeting, if you approve it, Kim will be the Assistant Library Director. What we don't have the ability to do is to pay her more. The Personnel Board needs to make that decision. So you guys have the memo, so that you could review that in advance, even though it dates it, and it says you guys already approved it. You know what I was doing here. So the idea is that this is the decision you made. You're sending it to Personnel. This is what the pay increase would be. So I worked on that with Vanessa. We looked at the numbers together, and that's what the recommendation would be. That is above, I should note, the midpoint for the position, but it is below the maximum pay rate. So Kim still falls within the SAP grade six chart.
Okay, and, but technically, you are doing this promoting. We are simply approving it, right? You're the.
I make a recommendation to promote a staff member. I cannot hire anybody or promote anybody without Board approval. So in a very technical sense, you, you, this group, the Board of Trustees, are the approval authority for promotion.
All right. Does anybody want to comment on this in any way, or shall I just move to accept? All right, let's do it. I move to accept, I move that the Board promote Kim Ivors of, from the position of children's librarian, Schedule A, grade five, to Assistant Library Director, Schedule A, grade six.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Eckberg?
Aye.
Trustee Landry?
Aye.
Trustee Maney?
Aye.
Trustee Reagan?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes unanimously. You've got it, Ryan.
Well, I, I'll speak for Kim for just a second and say, she appreciates this. I greatly appreciate it. And I definitely think this is a step in the right direction for the library. So thank you all for your support.
Well, thank you. I think we're all thrilled that Kim is, is going to do this.
Yeah, definitely.
It's a good move. It's going to be great. Okay, so do we have any, any other business which shall properly come before the Board today?
I really thought I was going to have an hour meeting for you guys.
It's close. All right, I'll, I move to adjourn.
One second.
All right, so, Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Eckberg?
Aye.
Trustee Landry?
Aye.
Trustee Maney?
Aye.
Trustee Reagan?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned, and it is 1:47 PM. All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. You guys so.
Nicely done, Ryan. Nicely done.
Yep.
And the thing I would say, it's, look on YouTube for the Ukulele Orchestra of Great Britain. It's hysterical. Hysterical.
I love it. Thank you.
We're going to do like a lib guide of like ukulele resources. You just, you just got our first link.
The songs they do are like "The Good, The Bad, And The Ugly," "Pinball Wizard." They have an ode to joy where they have all the audience participate. They all brought their ukuleles.
I think that's fabulous. Can we do the Star Spangled Banner? That would also be good.
You know what? I never even thought about this. We should eventually have like a ukulele recital. That would be amazing.
We could even do a Zoom one.
Yes. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, David.